Old business. Rich, for security measures, workplace violence. Rich Schrader.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me...
Mike, Rich.
No, no, I'm trying to find my homework.
Take your time.
I'm trying to find my homework. There's a letter in your pack that dated May 7th. I hope you had a chance to read it because I won't read it again. But let me explain something to you. On May... On March 5th, 2018, I was publicly accused by the town of Sunset Beach of workplace violence. This is... This incident was also indicated in the town's formal notice regarding the increased security measures. This declaration was implemented by the town without council knowledge or approval. According to our police chief and my personal attorney, my actions were not illegal, and actually, I did nothing wrong. As you can easily verify in the town's video, as I was leaving the meeting, I did not raise my hands or communicate any threats. Moreover, demonstrating your frustration caused by the opinion of a council candidate that could not be substantiated by public record should not be considered a vice. Accusing any public official without any formal charge in a public hearing open to the public as required by law and preventing the opportunity to allow for due process are basic constitutional violations. Workplace violence is a very serious matter and accusation which should never be covered up. Any attempt to do so only demonstrates the town's actions were political. I would like to file a motion to have the council hire an independent investigator to conduct a complete and thorough investigation of all the workplace violence incidents that have allegedly occurred from October 16, 2016, to the present as indicated in the town's formal security measure declaration. That is my motion, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second? Motion fails.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, real quick.
Yes.
I'd also like to point out that last meeting, we resolved to have the town attorney and I formulate an official policy separate from that memo and just remove the memo.
Mr. Mayor, I was accused of workplace violence by the town. I would like to have investigated. Why is not that the case?
Because two, the people that accused you, one is not working anymore, and the other person was dismissed. So, the one woman that accused you, not the town, the one budget director accused you, Rich, not the town, so...
No, she's an agent of the town.
Okay. She's no longer working for us.
And what does that mean?
So, why are we wasting time and money to do something like this, Rich? We know, and I agree with you, it should have never been done. But I don't think we should... We need to go forward and spend money on private investigators and people to investigate this.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Schrader has no right to decide what an employee is afraid of or not.
Well, Charlie, I do agree with that, but sometimes employees make statements that are really far out. I think Rich had an opportunity, he has the right to confront his accuser, as everybody in this country do. So, I think when she accused him of, you know, going out to the car to get a gun, I think that was a little far-fetched.
She didn't accuse him of that. She said she didn't know what he might do, and that was one example.
Well, that's accused... That's a horrible accusation to make against anybody, Charlie. I really believe that was out of... From the... From the podium, talking to the dice, I thought she's out of tune there, completely. So, the motion fails, so...
But a new pa... New policy is going to be...
Yeah.
Right, we're working on a new policy.
You understand that? They're working on a new policy, Grady and Hare.
Policy means nothing, Mr. Benton. It's the accusation that you're sugarcoating.
I'm not sugarcoating anything. I said I agree with you.
Well, then, why don't you accept the motion?
Nope, there was no... There was no second. So, we'll go to the next subject, please. Number five, fire department hiring process and justification. Rich, sure, please, up to the podium. Richard, real... Real quick, before we do that, I'd like to make a motion to put this off. Motion 17 to prevent this, it would be put back on the agenda for three months. Do I have a second?
Which issue is that?
This is the issue on workplace violence.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against?
Nay.
Whoa, 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 hold it. What is this three month, all of a sudden, this three month?
It's in your rules and procedures.
I'm tired of this council repeating things over and over.
Because we don't make decisions.
Yes, we do. Our attorney told you multiple times, I was on your side about John being recused, to accuse himself. But once I was told several times by the school of government and by Grady, our attorney... No, 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 let me finish.
What are we doing with this issue? Are we delaying this?
Richard, you asked me a question, let me finish. That's why I'm taking these things off the agenda, so we could simply go on new projects and new items and discuss things that will improve this town and not beat things to death. That's why.
And in three months, our new mayor can figure out how to handle all this.
Well, thankfully, we...
Are you listening?
Thankfully, we'll have a new mayor that may listen.
Okay. I think it doesn't call for Rich. All right, now, sorry, so we approve that. Okay. So, next is five, department hiring process and justification.
Yes, yes, I would, after my presentation, I would ask that we do not instill a hiring freeze on the fire department. This creates not a good atmosphere for our employees talking about this. I don't feel we're overstaffed. So, my presentation earlier, so I'm assuming we're up for discussion.
I think, you know, Richard, you and I have talked several times about this issue. I think it was just handled incorrectly by the old chief, and I think it was hired, you know, done correctly at the very beginning, three would have never been a problem. But, so that's my opinion. And, Rich, do you want to make a motion, or is it...
No, what did you say, Mark?
I said, Richard and I have discussed this matter. I think the way they came about doing hiring six, and they really wanted three, and didn't discuss this before we hired, bought all this new equipment, I thought Chief Dempsey did it incorrectly, but we're going forward. And I think that you have a motion on the table? Richard?
I haven't made a motion.
Well, it's...
But it's your... It's my dime.
It's your dime.
Let's see if someone can tell me why this little beach town has more firemen than Calabash.
Just make your motion.
I am discussing...
Charlie, we don't need that, Charlie.
Why this town, from a business standpoint, has more firemen than Shalope and Calabash, which have more restaurants, more shopping centers, nursing homes, schools, that you can imagine, needs to be answered.
Well, I just want to answer it real quick. Maybe because this town council sees it deemed to have 17 firemen to protect our citizens at Sunset Beach, and the other counties or towns do not want to do that. So, do you want to make a motion, Rich?
Yes, I will. Would like to file a motion not to fill any fire department full-time vacancies unless first approved by the council, and until a new fire chief is hired by the council in order to provide the new fire chief sufficient time to analyze his or her fire department staffing needs. The completed report should be provided to the interim town administrator and the council.
Do we have a second?
You're not going to get a second, Mr. Mayor.
All right, there's no second. It does. I'd like to motion, motion 17 to prevent this to come back on the agenda for at least three months.
Second.
So, I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nay?
Nay.
Number six, adoption of FY19 budget ordinance to establish tax rate.
If I may, real quick.
Yes, sir.
Address a few issues here. The budget you're being presented is unaltered from the way it was presented back in May. If y'all wish to discuss changes due to the fire fees and tax rates, that's the time to do it now. However, staff is proposing no changes tonight with uncertainty how other things are being budgeted. Also, we don't know the collection rate, everything's a projection. We're already doing a one cent tax reduction, and we feel that maintaining a revenue-neutral budget by if... I mean, it's not revenue-neutral now, but it's still deficit spending at this point. But y'all decided to increase how much money we're taking from the fund balance in order to make that one penny reduction on the tax rate.
I'd like to make a motion.
Make a motion, John.
I move that we adopt the FY19 budget and establish the FY19 tax rate at dollar .15 per hundred of the valuation, as laid out in the April 25, 2018 budget proposal.
Let the other people, John, I said decrease one penny per hundred for...
It's a decrease... It's a decrease of one penny.
Second.
We'll have a discussion. Discussion.
If I... If I may, real quick.
Sure.
I just want to also point out that the way everything's laid out, we will be able to use the figures this coming year because we do have some high-ticket purchases. We don't know how that's going to disrupt the way the tax rate is, but we'll be able to do a research study into finding out what a sustainable tax decrease in the future could be, and we're already projecting at least a penny and a half next year. So, just based on what we think the projections are coming in, based on the collection rates, based on everything, we'll be able to find a sustainable tax decrease. But just because one revenue source may equate to something today, doesn't mean it equates to the same thing next budget season. So, we need to not make any rash decisions, is staff's advice on that.
But the people in town have to understand, this year, we're spending over $600,000 of stormwater. That's equipment, cameras, and everything, which this town's pushed off for 40 years.
Contracts and personnel.
So, we're not going to have that expense next year. So, that could be part of the tax cut, plus the fire fees. So, if nothing drastic happens to this town, I do foresee a good tax cut next year. But to do it now, more than what we're doing it, I think it's irresponsible. So, we have a second, Charlie?
Yeah.
Second.
Discussion, Rich?
We will be putting an estimated, right, Mr. Mayor, the expenses for the stormwater management, which is around 620,000. A majority of that is for our one, our non-recurring expenses. We are also planning to put approximately, according to the material that Hare gave us, there will be a budget surplus this year of approximately between maybe 500 and 800,000. I'll put that range in, but the material that you provided to us was 150,000, is that correct? The surplus for fiscal year 18.
Yeah, when Bonnie calculated, she projected a high range of up to 800,000, but we're looking at closer to maybe 500,000. But I don't know where the 150 came from, unless I did a typo somewhere.
The savings by not dredging Jinx Creek will, which has been allocated, could save us, according to the construction records that Mr. Neal put out, is another 250,000.
That's in a separate fund, it's not in the general fund?
It's been allocated, I understand that, but it's a separate fund, but it's been allocated, so it's already included.
But it's not in the general fund, am I correct?
No, it's a project fund that's on the side that doesn't have allocation this year going into it either, so there's... It's not really related to any monies going back into the general fund until a project is closed.
So hypothetically, we took that $200,000, we said we're going to take that out, it would not go into our general fund.
Not until the full project's been closed out.
That could be two years.
Could be five years.
Rich, I just ha... I understand where you're coming from, I just, you know, sometimes I think we're counting the money before we have it, and I'm scared to do that. We have to...
I don't... But, Mark, I don't understand why you're so scared.
What point of order, please?
The fact is, we are going to get an additional, over half a million dollars of revenues this year from the fire fee.
Again, we don't know that for sure, Rich.
Okay, when we know that for...
Point of order, please. I'm calling a point of order.
For what reason?
The point of order is, I haven't had a chance to speak, and other councilmen have spoken twice before I've had a chance to speak.
Well, speak.
Miss Harris, speak.
Thank you.
Well, speak.
Thank you. I would really like to see us have a two penny additional decrease in our tax rate this year. Hare's answer is, we can't do it later on, it's either now or never. And I think I agree with Carol Scott, I agree with every word she said tonight, and I think we should at least have a total of three cent reduction in our budget. I'm done.
Sure.
Yes.
Rich, you want to finish your comment?
Is that a... Is that a suggestion or a motion?
No, it's not a motion.
Well, there's already a motion on the table.
We have a motion on the table now.
What is the motion on the table?
That we accept...
As presented.
As presented, we accept this budget. We have a second on it, now we're in discussion. Do you want to have any more discussion, Rich?
I would... I would support Ms. Harris's assessment. If she understood Ms. Scott, she should have understood my concerns, and I would... I would compromise that we would have and accept a two cent additional tax cut, which would bring the tax cut from the 16 cents to 13 cents. I would support that effort. I would compromise to that effort. Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes? Yes, Charlie?
This is my first budget process. You can... You can sit out here at the budget hearings, and you never really understand fully, so this was an eye-opener for me. I want to thank former town administrator Susan Parker and former finance director Bonnie Bray for putting this budget together. They also made it easy for me to understand. I went along with a 1% tax decrease, but reluctantly. A one cent reduction in the tax rate would save the owner of a $200,000 house $20 a year. The owner of a $500,000 house would save 50 per year, and the owner of a $1 million house would save $100 per year. Tax revenue to the town would decrease by 153,000. I'm going to skip some of this because it's been handled.
Mr. Mayor, is...
Charlie, you finished?
I'm not finished.
Oh, I thought you were finished, Charlie. Just calm down.
We have to consider possible future expenses. Public works, we have upgraded the current public works facility, we will need to acquire new property and build a facility to house public works and the new stormwater equipment and supplies. Storing the new, very expensive stormwater equipment outdoors will increase the cost of maintenance and decrease the lifespan of the equipment. The total cost to acquire the land, build a new facility, hook up water store, et cetera, et cetera, would be over $1 million. That's based on today's land values. This problem won't go away. We also talked for years about the need to acquire land for additional parking at Town Hall. We will have to face this issue sooner rather than later. Estimated cost, one-half to three-quarters of a million dollars. That's also based on today's land values. The salary and compensation study, some employees are being appeased by bringing their salaries up to a living wage, and we needed to do that. On top of that, we're giving current town employees a possible miserly, miserly, 3% increase. We need a professional study to consider and compare each facet of an employee's job description, their experience and longevity, and any additional training or advanced education gained by employees. In order to meet our future needs, I believe that lowering the tax rate at this time is a mistake. Let's wait a year, continue to save to meet our future needs, and revisit a tax decrease next year. By that time, I'm sure that our property assessments will rise. We can then easily lower our tax rate, however much we need, to stay equal. My hope is that the majority of the county, current council will not ignore our current or future needs in two... No, I'm not going to say that. Thank you, that's it.
Listen, I...
My turn?
Yeah, but I'd like to say something, John, real quick.
Sure.
I see where both sides are coming from, you know? I can see that maybe down the road, we need, you know, things to do something other than what's on the budget right now. But I think, and I, right now, I was against a tax cut, but I think that, you know, just push... I think personally, I would like to push the budget approval until the 19th, and so I can sit down with Hare and really figure out these numbers, because, you know, I listened to Carol, I listened to Rich, I listened to Jan, I listened to you, Charlie, and I think there is maybe an issue there where it may be able to do a tax cut and maybe not, but right now, there's a lot of ifs. So, what... We owe it to the town to look to see if we can. If we can, we should. If we cannot, we should not. So, I just... I'd like to put a motion that we just look right now until, if we can do a tax cut this year, not pass this budget until the 19th. Is that something we do?
Well, you can't motion it... You can't motion it till we...
You've already got a motion on the floor.
I got a motion, so...
But the question, Hare, did you have something to say about moving it to the 19th? What impact that does that have? Does it...
It just delays the process.
John, I believe we did that last year to the...
Well, I'm just...
If we delay it, though, without direction, so y'all need to discuss and see what you want to change, because if there's no change, there's no point in delay.
Well, I like... I like, you know, do I kill this motion? Rich has to kill the motion.
But you have to vote. It's been seconded, and you have to vote.
It's my motion, we had a second. But I haven't had a chance to talk yet.
I had, John, sorry.
Okay.
Will the commissioners discuss a decision?
We don't know.
He's talking right now. I don't know. Good, John.
All right. I agree strongly with what Councilman Nern has said, the value of building up a pool of money for, particularly for future requirements, not only the DPW facility, we've had this long-term need, or building need for acquisition, if you will, of the lot next door to either be able to expand this building or to put in parking, as just some examples. And part of the 1% cut that we did this year was not accepting, not allocating for the additional three part-time police officers that the police chief wanted. We cut the part-time administrative person that the deputy fire chief wanted from 30 hours to 20 hours a week. We did not address doing a professional pay and salary study, and I think that's getting benefit study, and I think that's getting to be more and more a requirement with taking care of the people and the staff that we have working for our town, serving the people. And we also did not, we took away the $10,000 grant for the next Sunset concert season that would have come out of our accommodation tax. So, I mean, with all of those, I'm quite comfortable with keeping the 1% tax reduction we have so far, looking through these future investments that we need to have, that we should be looking at for the near-term future, and then evaluating all of that with a larger tax cut perhaps being the target for next year.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor, no?
What is the motion?
Motion to accept...
Accept the budget.
This budget, as is.
With a 1% cut.
Two votes positive, what's your vote?
I'm voting against it.
I'm voting against it too until I have more information. That's three to two. I like to have a motion to direct Hare to find out what it would do to the budget to put another penny, penny and a half on the taxes of the decrease.
I can tell you right now that if you take off another two pennies that Jan was suggesting, we're looking at 310,000, 300,000, give or take, coming out of the fund balance, because there's no guarantee revenues are going up. So, I'm not going to increase revenue projections since they're already kind of padded.
Hare, I understand that, but we're getting additional $500,000.
No, 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 I'm done. You got to let people finish, Rich. Have to, it's rude. Good.
So, we should be clear in terms of what we tell them. If you're going to give them guidance, are you telling them to look at a total of 2% cut or a total of 3% cut?
I'm favored 2%.
Pennies.
Two cents, two cents.
Am I to cut services or increase the fund balance, we'll draw? I mean, we're basically robbing our savings account to do this, just to put it out there.
Well, you say that. So, say hypothetically, we do get 45 cents, 45%, that would cover that.
Yeah, and we still draw half a million dollars out of our fund balance.
Well, that's not a penny.
Not at a penny, but I'm just, you know, if we get that half a million up...
We already have a penny in the budget.
Well, no, we still have the balance is the thing, so if we get that, if we include all those revenues, we have to find somewhere to cut it out.
Okay.
Now, if we drop it by a penny, it's 155,000, give or take.
Right.
So, my question to you is, since our ad valorem taxes only cover 32% of our revenues as budgeted, we're already over-serviced for the money people pay for taxes, for their... For the service.
Does everybody understand that?
I mean, we're relying on outside revenue sources from the state and other government agencies to cover our operating expenses.
Forty percent of the revenue. The rest comes out of county and state and federal. So, Hare's saying that if we take more out of what we bring in, it's not revenue-neutral like Rich says it is. And I believe what Hare is saying is true. So, I would just like to push this off. I like this discussion, but I'd like to push it off until the 19th. It wouldn't hurt anything to push it off.
It's not going to hurt anything, but what I need to know, though, is what do I need to do with that money? Am I supposed to just pull more out of savings, or am I supposed to find something to cut?
Well, I'd like to find out when the county is voting on the fire fee. It has to be before June, July, rather, because they have the same budget that we do.
Their next meeting is the 18th, the day before hours.
So, the... What we know, so it goes with the day to find out what they're doing. I think... I think we owe the town...
I have no... I just need to know what to do with the money.
Well, let's find out what the county does with the fire fee. We will know that before...
24 hours.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I... I'm not for... I'm not for...
No, no, Rich, he's speaking now.
Oh, Jesus Christ.
I'm not a proponent of raising taxes.
We do...
I would like to pay less taxes, just like I'd like to lower the tax rate, but I don't think this is the time to do it.
Listen, I...
Our higher... Our higher calling is to serve the members of the town. If later on, we have to borrow money or rob the fund balance to take on some of these larger projects, there'll be complaints about that?
Being here for two years, Charlie, there's always going to be complaints, but we have to be smart in what we do, just get all the facts. We don't know what the tax, fire fee's going to be.
No, we don't.
So, the day before our meeting, we'll know that. If they come back at 30% or 10% or 45%, then we'll sit here and discuss it in front of everybody, saying, "This is what we can do." And we'll give direction to Hare and to say, "If they give the full 45%, where can we go? They give 35%, where can we go as far as a tax deduction?"
But staff's already giving you the recommendation on that, so I need to know what needs to be different from our recommendation, because our recommendation is if they go with the full force of that, then we don't take out of our savings. Because our recommendation is if they go with the full force of that, uh, then we don't take out of our savings.
There is no reason that they will not accept the recommendations by the municipal, by the municipalities. This town recommended, the fire study group recommended 45% increase. I have spoken to three commissioners who said that they, only one commissioner will vote against it. And she withdrew in the 40, in the, and that's Pat Sykes. All the others will follow what the municipalities requested.
First of all, we shouldn't be saying what Pat's going to do or not do.
It was public record, Mark, she stated it at a meeting.
I was there at that meeting.
The only point I'm making is, our recommendation has been made clear from the beginning. I need to know what you want to look at differently so that I can bring you that.
Wasn't it clear to you?
No.
It's clear as mud.
So, you're saying that if I, if it drops 45%, you can't come back to tell me where we can be? If it drops 35%, where we could be?
No, I can do that, but what I'm saying is, where are we going to, we have to, we have to present a balanced budget. So, if we increase, whatever the fire fee rate is increased, I need to know where to take the money out of another revenue, or increase in expenditure, or decrease expenditures. So, I need to know what your, your pleasure is. Am I just to increase how much we're taking out of fund balance?
Right, right.
Am I to decrease it? Am I to get rid of stormwater? Am I to get rid of personnel? I mean, where, where are we making the cuts for the cut in taxes?
Please don't do the scare tactics, I hate
I'm not doing
We're not going to, uh, lay off any employees, we're not going to set them up by their
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, geez, um
Quiet, guys, please, Karen, Karen, we can hear every word you're saying up here, all right? Yeah. Please, just be quiet, guys, everybody.
The fire fee is charged to everybody in the fire district. That's correct, right?
Yes.
And up until now, uh, the tax-paying citizens of the town have been subsidizing the fire department for what's not covered by the fire fees. Is that not correct?
Right.
That's correct.
Is it not the goal of these fire fees to cover the total cost of our fire expenses?
Within about $25,000, but yes.
Okay, if it's passed, we have a balanced budget right now. If it's passed, I don't see why we couldn't give the two cents, at least two cents.
Hareman, you're going to have to explain to us with this additional revenues, whether it's 550,000, what we're going to be doing with this money, other than we need more space for parking, we need a new public works department. In the meantime, as you well know, in this budget, we are outsourcing our leaf and limb. We have made aggressive steps to address our stormwater issues. We bought a lot of equipment this year, which are one-time expenses that will not reoccur next year. We are going to have our public works people work aggressively in resolving the stormwater management. We may, and we're hiring three additional police personnel.
Part-time.
We're reducing a large number of the overhead, our overhead, the overtime this town has been paying. This is a good budget, excluding the fire fee. This is a good, solid budget, and it provides a one-cent tax cut. It's a good budget. If there were no fire fee issue, none, zero, just put that aside and put it in your back pocket, I would support this one-cent tax cut. Now, we're getting additional $550,000, and you're telling us we can't reduce taxes.
I'm not saying you
We need to quantify that.
And I've tried to quantify it, sir, multiple times. But let me point out that we're robbing half a million dollars from our fund balance to cover this balanced budget. $508,000. We are deficit spending as proposed. If we deep, let me finish.
No, no, you and I have
We increase the fire fees, and that revenue goes up, right? Almost about the same amount of money that we're stealing from our fund balance. So, we would allow us not to deficit spend and be in the good. Now, next year, after those big-ticket items that we've neglected for 20 years plus are covered, we don't know what other equipment will also be needed. We're already planning on buying extra stuff for stormwater in year two and year three. So, decreasing now will not allow us to look at a sustainable decrease in taxes until next year, when we know for sure what is covered and what isn't covered.
You're making a good point. Let us know what that is, we need to know.
I just, I just told you. $508,000, we don't have to take, and next year, we can look at, we're already estimating a one, one and a half cent tax decrease for next year.
If you look at the million dollars or so that we're taking from the fund balance, 80% of that cost are not going to reoccur next year. We're not going to be hiring, uh, buying five new police office, uh, police vehicles.
But we will have police vehicles to buy next year.
Potentially.
Potentially.
We're hoping not, but we don't know for sure.
But at some point, we will go into a life cycle replacement process for the major pieces of equipment, and we'll have to have a fund line that goes through that. All this new equipment that we get will have maintenance costs. You know, you're not going to run these, these pieces of equipment that are running around off-road, digging ditches and looking through ditches and stuff like that without having repairs that need to be made.
John, I, I think that, you know, he makes a good point, he makes a good point. Again, I think everybody's making good points up here. I'd just like to look at it for one more week, sit down with him for a couple hours. He's already convinced me that we shouldn't lower the taxes. But today, things came up that made it maybe a little bit sensible to lower it a little bit more. But, you know, I'll sit in his office next week or this week, and he says, Mark, this is what's going to happen if we, we take more money off the, for a tax decrease. And I, you know, Richard, one thing I don't think you understand, right now, we are borrowing 500 some thousand dollars to make out of our fund balance. We're borrowing that now to make the difference in between the fire, the firehouse. There's a 500 deficit in our fire. We bring in, it costs us $1.7 million to run the firehouse, we, we get about $1.2 million. So, it's a $500,000 deficit, which we're bringing that out of our savings to pay that off.
No, we're not.
Yes, we are, but you also need to understand that we're worried about sustainability. If you drop it too low this year, there's a potential chance that you'll have to raise taxes next year. Plus, the revaluation's coming, and we don't know what the collection rate will be for these new fire fees. That's why we're not proposing the changes. I mean, there's a lot of ifs and maybes and up in the air. And then, at the same time, we are taking a half a million dollars out of fund balance, that is a fact. In this budget, it proposes a half a million dollars out of the fund balance with no projected plan to pay it back.
Well, but we're going to have
With no projected plan to pay it back next year. And the surplus this year doesn't matter squat for next year, because that's the same money that we're putting in this year that we're talking about taking out for next year. It's, it, it's not like we're, we're building up anything, we're not improving our situation. God forbid, there's a horrible storm, that's what that money's used for. We're required 75%. When we created the dredging budget, we reduced what we used to have down to 88.
Try to, try to think that we never had this fire fee increase at all.
Then adopt the budget tonight.
We have a one-cent tax, and the town is still financially extremely solvent. We have, we're getting more revenues. So, I don't understand, someone has to explain it to me. We're getting the 550,000 additional revenues, and if you didn't even include that, the budget's sustainable, it's solid.
We're still deficit spending this year.
You're missing the point that we're pulling 500 and, what is it, 80,000?
508.
508,000 out of our savings, out of our funds to have this balanced budget. We're taking it out of the savings now. That's what it's doing right now. And we haven't even discussed what, we have the possibility of even more road washing out like Crooked Gully and Barren Place and others that happened this year, which was a nice chunk of change that we had to pay.
My question is
That's already in the budget.
If, if we're pushing this off to the 19th, and we're to come back with different figures and alternate budgets, I need to know, because during our four budget workshops, we came up with the fact that y'all wanted to reduce the tax rate, but did not want to reduce the services or the expenditures. But something's going to have to give. So, I just need to know what you want to give or where you want to trade the money at. That's, that's all I'm asking. I just need to know how to, what to prepare for y'all to vote on.
Well, what I explained to you earlier is, if, if we wait until the 18th and to the county votes, we'll know where that stands at least. That won't help you?
I will be able to have a document prepared for y'all's review at nine o'clock in the morning on the 19th, based on their vote on the 18th.
Is that when they're voting here?
We don't know. That's just when their next meeting is.
I would assume it is.
Tonight, I think, I think.
It's not on their agenda for today. But I have no problem, I just need to know where to put the money or take it away from. That's all I'm asking. I don't have a problem just doing what we did last time when we dropped it one cent and just taking it out of fund balance, but I just need to know if that's what you want me to do.
What would have occurred? How much would that money be?
At one penny, it's about $155,000, give or take about.
For every penny, it's 155,000.
It's closer to 153 and some change, but yeah, rounding up.
So, if we give you that direction, and if we get the money from the fire fee, that money, that fire fee money, go right back and pay that 155,000? Can we do that, guys? Have a look at the one penny? And if the money comes into, would buy the fire fee, we put it right back into the, uh, our savings. And if we don't get the fire fee, then we'll adopt this budget.
All right, Mark, say that again, please, if
We take $155,000 out of the savings. When we know where the money is from the fire fees, once that fire fee money comes in, we put it automatically back into the fund balance. So, it doesn't, we're not taking it out of the savings, and we reduce the taxes one penny, the total of two.
Well
Compromise, Rich.
Boy, I already am. And I compromise with the recommendation that Ms. Harris suggested, which makes, uh, it, it should put everybody at ease. We're getting a half a million dollars extra revenue.
And all that does is replace what we're pulling out of our savings this year. And all that does is replace what we're pulling out of our savings this year.
And we're putting money in our savings.
You know the direction, if we, we adopt this 155, then we know that the direction you want to go.
I, I'll figure a, a couple alternate budgets up for y'all.
John?
If you're pushing this off to the 19th.
So, so, are we waiting until the 19th?
Well, just, John's will speak, and then we'll talk. All right, John.
I'm just uncomfortable with, with, with doing this, or even with the need for doing that.
I'd like to put a motion on the table that we adopt the budget for 2019.
As, as provided on
As provided. Ready for discussion? We've discussed, you know, we talked this to depth. The votes are, are we ready to vote?
This is with one cent tax, uh
One cent tax deduction, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All against?
I'm confused, I'm sorry.
Are you for or against this?
We're having a one-cent tax deduction, which we already have proposed.
And that's all we're doing this year.
So, when we get the additional revenues, it's not going to be revenue neutral.
No, it's going to go through our savings, and next year, we'll do a penny and a half, two cents reduction.
Absolutely, we'll be closer revenue neutral.
The motion's passed.
Well, you have
We had three, well, we had three votes.
Yes, two. The vote is to accept the 2019 budget as is with a one penny deduction. There's three in favor, your vote?
Excluding the fire fee, including or excluding
It's as presented, so it's excluding.
Excluding the fire fee, excluding the fire fee.
All right, but what does that mean when the fire fee is approved by the county and gives us an additional 550,000?
Right now, it goes back into the general fund.
Well, the process would be to do a budget amendment next year when we look at the revenue expenditure.
Regardless of what the county does, we are not going to have a tax, we're only going to have one cent tax cut.
Correct.
Period.
Correct.
No.
And?
I have a question. How, how, what kind of outreach are we doing to the community to let them know when they get their tax bill, it's going to be higher than it was last year, even though we're giving a penny reduction? I think most people look at the bottom line. I think everybody should know that they're going to have an increase on that statement they get come September.
An average house size at Sunset Beach is 2,000 square feet. That's a $50, a 25 cent increase in your fire tax. $56, 25 cents. The average tax cut on that house is probably about 112,000, 102, 102 dollars rather, roughly.
That we figured out? Yeah, it's, I mean, it's all depending on where located at.
What we'll do is, can you put this online so everybody can see it? You know, the tax increase is not, or the increase in the fire fees, unless you have an 8,000 square foot house, they go at $450. There's only three houses in Brunswick County that are 8,000 square feet. So, if you have a 3,000 square foot house to 4,000, you're going up $168.75. If you have a bigger, a little smaller house, 2,000 to 3,000, you're going up $112.50. That would cover the average cost of your tax decrease. So, I approve this budget, and I think it's a good budget. Like Rich said, you know, could we do more? I guess we could, but I am not going to put the cart before the horse. I've got to be fiscal responsible. I ran on that, and that's what I ran on, and I think the budget has to go through the way it is.
I think most
We have Jan's vote to get We have Jan's vote to get
You already voted, Rich, Jan?
Yay.
Okay. All right, next business. Adopt the town Sunset Beach budget FY 19, fee schedule.
We just did that.
We just did that.
Oh, the fee schedule?
No, fee schedule.
Uh, the fee schedule in your packet is proposed minimal changes. We've covered these at a budget workshop, but just to reiterate, we're adding barricades as a, as a feature to be rented out for the park as a price, and we reduced GIS services. We, we're not in the map-making business, so we took those out.
Took that out.
I have one question. With the barricades, when an application comes in, does the town tell the applicant that they need barricades? Or is this only for barricades that the applicant thinks that they need? Because we, as a town, put out barricades to cover things that we want protected.
Right, this is more for when they think they need extra barricades than what's already out there.
Okay.
Because ours aren't to be moved.
I just noticed that, you know, Paul's Billy ran very well yesterday after it was a great outing, but I did notice that they're still parking on the grass in some areas.
Yeah, we're, we're working on how to move forward with some people. Last, yesterday was a lot larger than they thought they were going to have to.
Great turnout.
So, we're, we already had police assistants down there helping with some parking yesterday afternoon. And we're looking at possibly, uh, going forward with special events that are high-impact and that require a police officer to manage traffic.
I'd like to make a motion.
Make a motion?
I move that we approve the town of Sunset Beach FY 18 to 19 fee schedule as presented.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
An ordinance to amend Article 12 Environmental Regulations, Part 1 Flood Damage Prevent, ordinance of the Unified Development Ordinance, UDL, the town Sunset Beach, North Carolina. Sir?
These are some heavy, extensive changes. I think I've had them for a month to look at. Most of these changes are already things we're doing in practice and already comply with NFIP standards. It's just we get better CRS credit than actually having written in our ordinances, and it helps us explain things to the developers and homeowners when they can see it in our writing instead of having to decipher the federal regulations and using the technical bulletins. So, a lot of the changes here are recommended by the state just to improve basically customer service aspects of it, because we're already doing a lot of this stuff. There's a few optional items in here, and they were married to go along with our fill-in grade ordinance and a few other things that we didn't go as, as strictly grade ordinance and a few other things that we didn't go as stringent as the state would have liked us to be, but they're not really suited for an island either. They're suited more for...
Please feel comfortable with this.
Oh, yeah, this is, uh, three months of my life I feel very comfortable presenting to y'all, so...
I have two quick questions. What is the CRS credits?
Um, that's our community rating system. That's what gives everybody their flood reduction on their insurance. We're at currently a seven, which gives people a twenty percent reduction on their flood insurance. It is very difficult to get a seven, and they're getting ready to change the point values again soon, but I still think we can maintain a seven. But these changes in our ordinance will help us maintain that seven.
For a beach community, seven's very high.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's not, I mean, there's very few higher than seven in the state. Well, there's plenty, but there's not as many as there are CRS credit towns. So, seven's really good for us. We set at eight for several years, and most communities sit at eight. Even after the point change, a lot of those communities went to a nine. So, we were fortunate with that point change to grab that seven, and a lot of that is the way we preserve our marsh area.
Okay.
So, so what would the point score be to get a higher level? I mean, is that a six?
The six would be better. It'll be, it'll involve a lot more work, and to be completely honest with you, I am, even if I wasn't taking on town administrator duties, I'd still be stretched pretty thin to make those programs happen without extra staff. And furthermore, even if we got to a six, to get below a six, you have to have implemented a full-on stormwater program that our town would never have right now. So, we're, we're sitting, in my opinion, at the best that we're gonna get for a while, and that's not like slack on our part, it's just the nature of things for our community.
And this draft is the same one we had at last meeting?
Yep.
Without any additional changes?
No changes.
Is there a motion?
I move that we accept this ordinance.
Second?
Can I have it as cited by the consistency statement? You can say the consistency statement as included in the packet.
As included in the package.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Does anybody need to take a break? We're cutting this, push through these next three things.
Let's get them done.
Okay. New business. Communication policy update request outside communication. Councilman Earn.
All right. First of all, I want to apologize to Representative Eiler. The good old boy remark was referring to Mr. Serrato because he has his own little special way of, of...
Charlie, let's keep it civil. All right? We talked about this in the process.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to explain that it was directed at Mrs. Serrato, not Mr. Eiler, and there were some emails today. So, on February twenty-fifth, Mr. Serrato sent Representative Eiler his beach fund request without the knowledge of the other council members. On the May third, at the May third council meeting, Mr. Serrato informed the council of these actions, and figuring that Mr. Eiler was never gonna, that this would never be allowed, I agreed and voted yes. In the past, there have been many times Mr. Serrato has gone out on his own. I mean, he, he claimed earlier that Mr. Corbett went out on his own without council permission. But there's been times when, when Mr. Serrato ordered, as a mayor, ordered town personnel to fix a personal friend's potholes.
Charlie, sorry. I have to stop you there. We are not attacking anybody anywhere. That happened four years ago, Charlie. Let's be relevant for today, please. All right?
Well, I think this is all relative because of the history, but I, I won't go any further.
Thank you.
I don't think, I don't think any council member, and one other thing, Mr. Serrato, in that letter to Mr. Eiler, sounded as councilman. Richard Serrato, Councilman Sunset Beach. That sounds as if he's speaking for the town. And I don't, I believe the only one that can do that is, is the mayor or one of us with council.
Even the mayor has to have council approval, Charlie.
Right.
So, do you have a motion to this, Charlie?
I move to approve a communications policy amendment to ban any member of the governing body from communicating with state and county officials and the news media, supposedly speaking for or on behalf of the town of Sunset Beach without the full council's permission.
Is there a second?
I have a question first.
Sure. Good job.
Sort of, how, how do we go about distinguishing between when one of us is speaking as a member of the council or, or one of us is speaking as an individual? And, and part of that goes through another problem with our communication policy. I mean, my thinking is first, we as elected officials are by definition all politicians. Anything we say or write or email about the town is a political activity that happens because we're, we're in a political arena. That's why our communication policy has the statement on the bottom of it that's supposed to be a notice that anything that we have is subject to FOIA. And we approved that back in several months ago, March fifth, when I had that. Yet, you know, I would say there's a high percentage of emails that council members send inside the council, to the town, and outside the council that don't have that disclaimer which tells the citizens about it. And, and I think, among other things, we need to enforce that. And I think what we need to do is, is make it clear that we do not have the authority to go out and speak for the council or the town without the council approving it on any issue, and that any email that we send, as is in our communication policy, needs to state pursuant to the NC General Statutes, Chapter Three, One Thirty-two, et cetera, et cetera, that this is subject to, to, to FOIA's. And, and I think, I don't know, we're, I'm not sure if we really need to make a, an amendment or anything, but we need to have it as a clear understanding that that's what the role, the, the council role. We don't go out and speak for the council unless the council says, "Go speak on this behalf of this issue."
As the policy right now doesn't state that clearly, though, John. So, we need to tweak the new policy.
I'd, yeah, okay. I'd be more than happy to tweak the policy to state that.
Okay. Charlie, can you table that until John does that?
Yes, I may go ahead, too.
I don't have to have a motion for that, Lisa, do I?
So, I'll bring that back on the nineteenth?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure, Rich.
I, I, I promised that I would not discuss this issue, but I think what you're suggesting violates free speech in the Constitution.
We have to look what he writes up, Rich. We don't know what he's gonna say.
Just the thought of it, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I don't want anybody outside this dice here talking to individuals...
You have the right...
Let me finish, Rich. You asked me a question. I think that, you know, some people come outside as council, talk to individuals on, in the eye that, eye of that person, that you are speaking on behalf of this council, you, me, whoever it may be. John's just gonna tweak that to say, "Listen, when you speak to Frank or someone else," you have to tell them very clearly, "This is your belief. This is your, your idea, not the council," unless the town council agrees on that. I think that's not stunning, uh, uh, freedom of speech. It's just we're making rules that we have to live by, and that's a fair rule. And after John comes back and we don't like it, we can discuss it some more. We're just looking to tweak it so we don't have rogue people going out in behalf of this council, speaking on behalf of this council without permission. I mean, as Pro Tem Mayor, I asked Hyman today, "Could I go out and talk to people?" Technically, I cannot unless the town council approves me to go out there and do that. That's not stopping my freedom of speech. I'm just following the rules of this dice. So, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, Rich. Again, I thought you weren't gonna speak about it, too.
So, we're, we're gonna put that on disposition of directives for the nineteenth?
Right. He tabled it, and John's gonna tweak it a little bit and come back, and at that time, we'll have discussion. New business invitation for the coastal estuary ocean experience to make presentation. Councilman Harris.
Yes, and I'm just gonna go ahead and make the motion.
You're great.
I would like, I will, I move to invite one or more coastal estuary ocean experts to make an educational presentation to the council and the public about the scientific facts that relate to Sunset Beach's estuary system. That's my motion. I have a number of scientists that could come speak to us, and I'm open to anybody suggesting scientists.
Are you talking about doing this like at the beginning of one of our meetings like we did today?
Yes.
The public presentation? Yeah. I check of the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
Public comment?
Disposition of directives.
All right. Still don't know what that means.
Um, I'm gonna go down the list for you real quick, make sure this is what we still want and what needs to be added.
Agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Well, all the agendas. We're doing the business community outreach forum on the twelfth still. ERC rules and responsibilities final draft, still on the nineteenth. I'm asking the people who are supposed to be drafting.
Say that again.
The ERC rules.
That's you and Jan.
On the nineteenth?
Yeah, that's you and John.
No.
No, she can't do it then. Second, Jan? Or the seventeenth?
Let, July.
Oh, John, you're not here.
John will be here on the seventeenth.
I'm not here on the seventeenth of July. Do it in August.
August.
Okay. August sixth?
First meeting or second meeting?
Prefer it be the second.
Okay, so is that gonna be August? Twenty-first?
Yep.
All right.
Lisa, I sent you some agenda reports. Are they on the, are they gonna be on the...
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to the, anything new in a second. Let me finish going through the existing list.
Please.
Island Parking Shuttle Service, is that still on for the nineteenth, Mr. Serrato?
Yeah, don't call it a shuttle. It's, it's Citizen Beach Parking on the nineteenth.
Of June.
Of June.
Climate control measures. Mr. Corbett?
I think that ought to wait until after we have...
ERC.
This, this, this presentation that's here.
Okay.
The, the climate control measures that we're sort of talking about since we killed recycling at this point.
We're still working on it.
Yeah, we, we have to work on that.
We'll just take the date off.
The short term was recycling, and that's, we're not ready to go forward with that yet.
All right, we'll just take the date off then.
Yeah.
The consideration for the mayor that's on for the six nineteen, flood maps and Camel Nuke's plan are already public hearings have been advertised, salary benefit study update, still blank.
Let's put that on for September fourth. There's no reason to act on that now with the budget being approved.
Right. I'm still working on the nonprofit funding policy for next year's budgeting session, so that's on hold. And we've got the communication policy update for the nineteenth, and then Mr. Serrato has, how many? Three, was it three items? I forget right now. They're in my...
What are they?
I forget. Uh, there is...
One was a community meeting, establishing the community meeting?
Well, that's, yeah, you read my report.
Do you just want us to put them on the disposition directives, but not, are they for the nineteenth?
That can't be on the nineteenth because the new mayor will...
Just put it on the directive, but don't put a date because...
Yeah, because we, we'd like to have the new mayor sworn in by that.
All right, we'll, we'll add, everything that Mr. Serrato sent to us this week, they'll be added to the disposition directives without a date?
Yeah, do it the nineteenth.
And anything is...
Huh?
That's fine.
There, there's several items. I don't know which ones you want to do for the nineteenth and which one you want to leave blank. I can't, we didn't write them all down with us.
I don't have them with me, Lisa. I don't have them with me.
Huh? Oh, yeah, one's the dredging depth of Jinx Creek.
We could simply put it on the nineteenth for deposition to talk about.
Okay.
All, all right, just do that.
Yeah, see if there's any interest. It may not be seconded.
Okay. Any other thing, Harm?
Uh, not that I'm aware of.
All right, public comments? Anybody like to speak? Come up to the podium, please. State your name and address, please.
Mary Ann DeMay, four four one Lakeshore Drive. Thank you all for the help you gave me in the emails, and I'd especially like to give a shout out to our police chief on the work that he did on the alligator report. I am in favor of the, what the North Carolina Wildlife Commission has put forth, the one month population reduction hunt. In talking with our police chief, he's, he, he wants to keep all of the alligators and just take out, you know, the, take out the big nasty ones. I, I don't know if that forty-seventh alligator count that they did last year on our lake is completely accurate, because as I shared with our mayor pro tem, we have eighteen in just the little lagoon next to our home, and I don't know if they counted those. Further, the female that lives to the, her lair is to the left of our home. Her boyfriend is in that lagoon, and every year, they produce a nest. Last year, Alicia Davis, a wildlife conservation biologist, came down, and I was lucky enough to have her at our home when there were babies. And so, they tagged them, and she and I have been communicating. So, if we don't relocate some of these giant ones or, you know, I, I'd just like some alligator help.
Okay.
So, that's it.
Thank you.